Welcome, everybody. It is 6:00 PM on August 10th. Welcome to the Oceanside Unified School District Board of Education meeting that's being held in public. My name is Stacy Begin and I'm serving in the role of Board President tonight. So I'm waiting for people to sit down. They got it. Great. All right. So I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM and we're going to go ahead and do a roll call. I'm Stacy Begin. I'm the Board President. I'm here.
Mike Blessing.
Eric Joyce, President.
Raquel Alvarez, Clerk.
We have one Board Member, Eleanor Evans, that is out sick today. So we have four of us. All right, moving on, we have Item B, the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike Blessing. Will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please rise and take your hats off, hands over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right. So Item 2C, Public Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. Sorry, I'm looking at my notes. The Board unanimously voted to appoint Frank McInnes, Director of Nutrition Services. Yay. Go ahead and stand, please, so we can recognize you. Is Frank here? Oh, there he is. Thank you, Frank. The Board unanimously voted to appoint Julie Schluter as Principal of Palmquist Elementary School. Julie, can you please stand? The Board unanimously voted to appoint Kenny Wright as Principal of King Middle School. Congratulations. All right. Item 2D, Approval of Agenda. I'll call for a motion.
I'll motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Agenda's been approved. Moving on to Item 3, the Superintendent's Report. Hold on. Thank you. Please don't yell at it in a meeting, but I understand.
I'm sorry.
Do we have... Sorry.
We actually have three comments on Item 2D.
Item 2B, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Approval of Agenda.
Approval of Agenda. Okay. Sorry about that. We usually don't have comments.
Yeah, I really believe these would be public comments, but we will go on. Kara Smith, Louise Euripo, and Katie Taylor.
All right. Before you start speaking, I just want to let you know we have two different types of public comment. We have public comment on agenda items, so I apologize if I hadn't gotten that information. We also have public comment on non-agenda items, which we have at the end of the evening. So I just wanted to say, you have three minutes and you will see the time up on the screen up there, so you kind of have a visual. And I will stop you at three minutes, so I don't want to be rude, so try to stick to your three minutes.
Time's going.
And then the rest, the audience, if I could ask that you refrain from any shouting or cheering or yelling or celebrating. I really want to hear the public comments, so do my other Board colleagues. So I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Hi. My name is Kara Smith. I have two students in the Oceanside School District. My son will be going into first grade this year. My understanding is it's been requested by people who feel the same way as me for the mask choice for the parents to be put on the agenda, and it wasn't. So I'd like to also request that it get on the agenda for next time. There's a lot of people who feel very strongly about this. That it's not just about comfort either. I would like to suggest to you guys, looking into the health benefits of not wearing a mask and the health problems for social-emotional learning. There's still learning, like cues, from facial expressions. I've found research articles on JAMA that talk about the CO2 buildup within the mask, especially for children, and younger children especially, which my kids are younger children, so I'm really concerned about that. I just think that also it's incongruent that they go outside and play together without masks unrestricted with social distancing and such. And I think for some parents, it kind of like keeps them from making a big fuss because they're like, oh, at least they get to do that. But in my mind, that just shows that this isn't really like a concern about them interacting closely together. So it doesn't make sense that like the policy is mask indoors and then outside they could play close in touch and all of that. I really, really don't want to homeschool because I don't think I'm really a teacher. But it's getting to the point where I'm like concerned about stuff. I'm even concerned about shutdowns, but the main thing right now is the masks. And I think that parents should have the choice. People at home have had the choice to be vaccinated if they want to or not. And back in the beginning, we were kind of told everything would get back to normal once, you know, the vaccine was out, and it is. So kids are not really affected by this. When the flu comes around in flu season, which does affect children, young children can die from it. We never do big shutdowns or mask-wearing at schools for that, so that doesn't make sense either. And that's about all I got to say. So thank you.
Thank you.
Louise. Okay. Katie Taylor.
I was going to like approval of the agenda as an item.
This is mine. Let's see. I am voicing my disapproval of the agenda. The Board has placed public comment at the end of the meeting. Number 14, public comment should be the first and most important item on the agenda, not until after adjournment. This demonstrates complete lack of respect for Oceanside parents and residents who want the Board to hear their concerns and questions. I'm sure this is on purpose, to avoid hearing the people, hoping no one will wait until they've had their voices heard. If you asked everyone in this room and what their opinion is, and that when they thought public comment should be heard, I'm confident the majority would say at the beginning. But like everything else with this school board, you really don't care what residents think. For you, it is all about control and limiting public opportunity to voice our opinion. I'm requesting the Board change their agenda procedures. For any and all future meetings, public comment should be the first item on the agenda. Show respect for the people you serve, not disdain of last in line.
Louise Euripo.
What's up, guys? First time. Raise it up. Yeah, there we go. First time talking in front of a school board, so. I noticed that masks in schools isn't on the agenda, and I'd like to request that it be put on the agenda for next time because I feel it's a very huge issue going on in society right now. We talk about masks, no masks, and there's a lot of other things going on. And I'm sure as a school board, you guys have a lot of pressure coming from both ways and things you've got to deal with. And you're taking information. There's a lot of stuff out there. There's science one way, there's science the other way. So I want you guys to look at where the science is coming from. The CDC has been consistently confusing and wrong invariably about everything. They've taken masks off, they've put masks on. We've seen instances where people can go into restaurants, take their masks off and sit down and enjoy a dinner, but children can't sit in a classroom six feet away from each other, they still have to wear their masks. We know that the N95 mask was designed for sterile air environments in a hospital where the air is completely sterile. These masks are not designed to be in environments where there's open air and a lot of pollutants. So having children wear these masks for eight hours a day is not going to be healthy for them. And lastly, there's a lot of psychological, mental, and emotional studies out there that show these damages can be caused to these children. We're covering their smiles, we're covering their faces. This is how children learn, they see each other. And I just ask you guys, think about growing up when you were in school. If you had to wear a mask all day, sitting in a classroom. I just can't even imagine it as a child, having to wear that thing, not understanding why. And I just kind of call on your emotion. I call on your... When you're putting these things on the agenda, to think about that. There's a lot of parents out here with kids, they don't want to see their kids damaged this way, wearing these masks. So I just really want you to think about that. And I have a little girl coming on the way. She's going to be born in November. And if I was going to have my daughter in a school that had to wear masks, I would never, ever, ever allow her to be in that school. I would take her to homeschool or put her in our private academy. So I just want you guys to consider that, that there's a lot of other parents that feel that way. And I'd hate for something to happen where parents are pulling their kids out of schools and it just gets crazy at that point. So guys, just kind of consider that and thank you.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is Item 3A, the Superintendent's Report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Vitale.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. I just want to share and remind everybody that the first day of school is Monday, August 16th. And super excited to announce that this year, we have Transitional Kindergarten at all of our K5 and K8 schools. And we have a total enrollment of 287 Transitional Kindergarten students. So we built the program and they showed up, and we're very excited to offer this to the community. And we all look forward to the first day of school.
I'm sorry, Madam President. We have public comments on that item.
On the Superintendent's Report?
Yep.
All right. Three people. All right.
We have four. So our first one is Maria Wally.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you behind the mask. Did you call Sharon McKeman?
I'm the one that's calling you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Am I first or was someone else first?
You can go.
Oh, okay. All right.
And then Maria.
Okay. All righty. Should I go ahead and start or was there a timer? Sorry. Okay. So I'm Sharon McKeman. I'm the founder of Let Them Breathe. I have been... My kids are not currently in the Oceanside Schools, but we have been part of the Oceanside Community for over a decade. And I just want to share with you that last Board meeting, you had people tonight commenting on the approval of the agenda because last Board meeting, you heard from a lot of parents and even a lot of children asking you to put our mask choice resolution on your agenda. Because you cannot in any way, as a school board, get in trouble for sending the agenda, the resolution that we have drawn up, to the state. It simply outlines that there is not a good scientific basis for masking children. There have not been studies to prove that it's effective, or safe, or necessary. This resolution that we have also outlines the harms of masking children. We know that it is harming their mental health, their social health, and their academic progress. And I know that you all have seen the grades in your academic community go down over the past year. And it wasn't just because of distance learning, it was because of restrictions like masking. And so this resolution also puts forward that you, as a school district, won't do anything discriminatory or harassing to a child who can't take it anymore and takes their mask off at school while they are trying to just be part of their in-person education. So that's something that you, as a school board, can do, and we're asking you to do that. We hope that that would be part of the agenda or the Superintendent's Report, that you would be sending this resolution to stand with us and tell the state that you want local control back. You should be able to do your job and every family should be able to make their own decisions. Because you know what? There's a governor in one of the states that was the most restrictive that just resigned. Because these government officials and agencies, they're not just fallible, many of them are corrupt and unethical. And we are parents and we care for our children and we are seeing them suffer behind these masks. We cannot continue to see this go on. We are saying enough is enough, not on our watch, and we are calling on you for that to be your cry as well. You have a responsibility. We know you're under a state mandate. That's why Let Them Breathe. We're partnering with you, we're trying to help you, we're suing the state of California to try to get local control back for you. And we want you to partner with us. Just send a resolution, put it on your agenda, at least talk about it. Take that first step and consider the resolution we've put forward so that you can partner with us to get your control back so that you can do what's best for your family and all of these kids. These kids are still smiling. That's an absolute blessing after what they've been through. And we can't think that if we continue to cover those smiles, that they will continue. There have been mental health tragedies happening in our community and we can't see it go on. Thank you so much.
Next speaker, Maria Wally.
So I just want to remind you that we have public comment on agenda items, so it has to be related to the agenda item. So I just wanted to say that. We generally don't have public comment on the Superintendent's Report because no one knows what her report is until she gives it. So we have three public comments and they need to be related to the Superintendent's Report. So if it's not, we can put it at a different time.
Well, we might want to because some of these says mask mandate.
That is a non-agenda item?
Yes.
We would like you to add it, please. Since school's starting...
It's a non-agenda item.
To add it. Thank you. We're starting school. Our children have been without a mask all summer long, and now you're telling them they have to wear a mask. How would you feel if that happened to you? If you've been running all summer long, or swimming, or being at the park, playing with your friends, your neighbors, and smiling, seeing their faces, seeing a smile, and actually feeling love coming through eyes that you could see, and emotion that you could read on somebody's face? And now you're telling them you have to wear a mask because the state says so? We would like you to consider the mental health effect of that. We don't know what is going to happen in a month, two months, three months. But what's going to happen to our children in five, 10, 15, and 20 years? What we're doing by putting... What the state is doing by putting masks on our kids is basically saying, we don't care about you. We want you to not be able to read people's emotions. We don't care what the mental effect on you is. If you have anxiety, if you have depression, or other conditions that are arising from not being able to read what other people are feeling, to not... From not being able to see their faces and see what emotions they're telling you when they look at you. So please reconsider, put masks on the agenda, and give parents a choice. That's all we're asking. Having a choice whether a child wants to wear a mask or not. It is a choice, and we still have the freedom to choose. Thank you.
So are we going to wait for the next two for public comment, Madam President?
Yes.
We already let two go, so that doesn't seem equitable.
Okay.
But in the future, the item has to be on the agenda. So you should be speaking about TK, which is what the Superintendent did share information about. So anyways, call up the next two speakers, please.
Claire Champagne and Mark Servin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time and energy today. Here is a father of two, a child that's 10 and six, knows past the TK age. But we're parents and members of the Oceanside Community, want to express our concerns that our children aren't unable to learn and learn to read and write because they're hidden behind these masks. And as a concerned parent, I want to just voice the fact that we need to have that option for our children, and we would like you to consider that. With all due respect to everything that's been passed down by the CDC, it has been very hit and miss, flip and flop, this week to that. It's always changing. It's an ever-moving target. And I think the end goal for the success of the school district and the Board members is to have children in classrooms, learning to the best of their ability. And to do that, they need to be able to breathe properly for their health and for their cognitive abilities. So we ask that you consider this, and please let it be an option, that the parents choose what's best for their kids. Thank you.
It's Claire.
I didn't come prepared to speak, but I would love to speak. But I really do feel it's important to have this on the agenda, and I have not been to a meeting in many, many years. I see that you started counting me, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk for about 45 seconds, get some blood sugar up in me, and then I want to hear what you have to say about TK, because I had an issue about that about 16 years ago and it affected my son traumatically. Not traumatically, just drastically. And actually, Smedley, I think I saw Smedley here. Is he here? Was Mr. Smedley here? I'm sorry. He could attest to some of those effects of TK situations. So I will bow out for the next two minutes or however long it takes, and then I'll take my next two minutes, if that's okay. Is that okay? Would that be all right?
No.
Want me to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have the floor right now and you have two minutes?
Okay. Back to the mask thing. I really don't feel that maybe half of you really want to be wearing these masks, or maybe you do, I don't know. I don't know how anybody feels. And you know what? It doesn't really matter whether I know how everybody feels. I just know that everybody needs to do what's right for them. And I don't care what's right for their kids, what's right for their grandparents, and everybody in between. And I really don't think I need to say anything other than, we live in frickin' America, people. We live in America. We don't live in Nazi Germany or pre-Nazi Germany. We don't live there, people. And I mean, and I'm saying people to you because I kind of feel like you know where I'm at, and I think all of you know where I'm at. Just wake up in the morning and realize what world we're living in right now, and it is out of this freaking world. Can you just wake up, everybody? And I'm not talking about you, or you, or you, I'm not pointing any fingers. I wake up and I look at myself and I go, what the hell am I going to do about this? That's what I'm going to say. I mean, what am I going to do about it? Because I am not happy with this world I live in. I am not happy with my friends, my church, that have lost a woman, who have lost their mother. I have lived what that woman lived. I know many of you know who I'm talking about right now. Because if you don't, God help us. We need to be helping one another. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the next item. Item four, Board Reports. I'm going to turn it over to Board Trustee Eric Joyce, the Vice President. Do you have a board report tonight?
Just very briefly. I've been to several district meetings over the course of the last month, and mostly right now, I'm just thinking about how pumped my first grader is to go to school next week. He's been begging about it all summer long. So he misses his friends, and we're lucky to be able to send him back into a safe environment. So I'm just, I'm looking forward to this year, and so I'm excited. And I appreciate everyone that came and spoke from a love for their kids, and I think we all share that. So let's start this year on the right foot, and I look forward to a great year.
Thank you, Eric. I'm going to turn it over to Raquel Alvarez, School Board Clerk.
I know for me, I've just done a couple of things as far as being back on campuses with registration, getting to see families and everybody back at the school sites and on the campuses, excited and ready and motivated to be back in school. And just, I know for my own child, it's a new school, all for him again, and just, I'm excited for him as far as everything goes, and just new classes, a new environment, new people. And just again, going back and seeing everybody that he had missed over this past year and a half has just been kind of crazy, and so the excitement is there. I'm excited for him. Going back onto these school campuses again and seeing the registration, helping through the registration process was actually kind of cool because it brought me back in the sense of just wanting to be back on the schools campuses, motivated to help our students to succeed, to be the young people that they are meant to be. And that means just being them and being on a campus, excited, ready to learn, and to just prepare for their futures overall. So thank you to all the administrators that allowed me on their campuses and had me on their campuses to be a part of that, because it was just the most amazing time for me. I know for like my own, it took two and a half hours of registration, which was kind of fun, in the chaos of it, because we didn't get bumped anywhere, we just, we went through the process. And so it was kind of cool for him to see that, oh, Mom didn't get me bumped, I just get to do what everybody else does. But again, I am excited for this school year, to be back, to see our teachers back with their students, ready and encouraged to teach them, to learn with them, to love on them, because it's what they do. It's what our staff as a whole does, our administrators, our certified and classified, everybody together, because it takes a village. And I love our village. We have an amazing village. And I thank you all as we prepare and get ready, because we're a week away, we are really a week away, of just making this all come full circle again. And so thank you again for everybody, for all your hard work, from administration to all of our staff. Thank you so much, and let's go. Let's do this. And thank you again.
Thank you, Raquel. Mike?
I'm about 30 years out of having kids in classes at El Camino and Martin Luther King Schools, but I know you guys have been all been working really hard this summer to get ready for classes, so I'm happy for that. I did attend one event last week with fellow Board members. It was retirement honorees for the 20 or so honorees who retired this past year with us, came to the Oceanside Museum of Art, and we had a nice little ceremony with them, and it was great to see them move on with their lives to a future careers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I also attended that retiree event, and it was amazing, seeing all our retirees from 1920 and 2021 meet outdoors. It was great. I also went through registration at Chavez Middle School where we are tonight, and my son is both anxious and excited for eighth grade. So, all right. Board reports are concluded. We're moving on to Item 5, General Consent Items. I'll make a motion to approve.
We do have...
Oh, we do have... Sorry.
I'm sorry. We do have comments on 5Q and R for under general consent.
Okay. So first, I'm going to make a motion, and then we'll have public comment. So I made a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Thank you, Eric. We have a first and a second. Now we'll have public comment.
So Patty will be speaking on 5Q and 5R.
So for those of you without an agenda, 5Q is Approval of Contract with Curriculum Associates for I-Ready. Is that what you're speaking to?
Thank you. Yes. What was your approval on when they voted? Was it on all the general consent items?
We haven't approved anything. We just made a motion. A first and a second.
Do you do a blanket? Do you do a blanket?
Yes. We have certain... Great question. We have certain items that are under general consent items, so usually just little business.
Oh, all of these? A through R?
Yeah, A through R.
Okay. Yeah. I just, I'm not talking so much as asking questions. First of all, I'm a little confused because when you're sitting there, you have your masks on. When you speak, which is when you spew out, according to the science, you take them off. I don't understand if that makes sense, following the science. Anyway, do you agree? Or do you understand what I'm saying?
Are you speaking to Item 5? Are you speaking to item 5Q?
That was a general question. 5Q and R. I would like to ask the board, Raquel, can you explain 5Q to me, please? Yeah, they can respond on agenda items.
We do not.
Right, Stacy?
No.
Non-agenda items, but you were, we were told that you could respond on agenda items.
No, we do not respond to questions during public comment.
This is not public comment, this is a.
You are doing a public comment on item 5Q and R. That's your public comment. You have three minutes to provide a public comment. Board will have discussion, then we will take a vote for item five, which is general consent item. So you're to be speaking right now on the topic of approval of contract with curriculum associates I-Ready for the 2122 school year.
Okay, so we can never ask questions then of the board, is that correct? For clarification?
No, we do not respond to questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right, Graham. We can ask questions but not get an answer. So how does that involve the public? I don't quite understand. Just a few clarifications. Anybody? No? No comment? Okay. No, and then ask questions, which is what I'm doing. Excuse me, do you have the floor? Do you have the floor? Okay, so on 5Q and R, you're spending a total of 410,000. That I question whether that's needed. That's my comment. And I was hoping that you all could give me answers to that. But we just have to sit here while you vote, is what I'm understanding. So we have no input on these items. Okay. That's it on those. Thank you.
Thank you. Is our only public speaker? Or do we have more?
That is all for a general consent. Then we have two other.
All right. So I'm looking to my board colleagues. Do you have any questions, discussion?
No, as a practitioner, I-Ready curriculum is a strong curriculum overall, and I would move for its approval.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving general consent items 5A through 5R, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. Moving on to item seven, personnel. 7A, approval of new class specification, community school coordinator. So on this item, we will have a staff presentation. The board will ask questions of staff. Do we have any public comment, Anne, on this item?
We do, one.
Okay, we do have public comment. The board will have a discussion, and then we'll go from there for our vote. This is an action item. We want the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Begin. HR has created the job description for school community coordinator. And we have Dr. Levy to share a little bit more about this new position and how it will work in the district.
Good evening, Board. I'm Mercedes Levy. I'm the Associate Superintendent of Educational Support Services. And I'm excited to provide you with an update on our planning for community schools in Oceanside. Next slide, please. As we explored community schools, it was evident that we needed to be clear about the goals for the community school and why we proposed implementing them in our district. Key to this work is understanding that all actions taken is in service of learning for all students. Successful schools provide students with the education they need to be successful, productive adults. We know that in some communities, the barriers to learning are greater than in others. And that by addressing these barriers and meaningfully connecting our communities, parents, and guardians, resources can improve student outcomes. Next slide, please. Our journey in exploring community schools started in May of 2021, when the Board of Education provided direction to include community schools as part of the Local Control and Accountability Plan, also known as the LCAP. When the LCAP was approved in June, funding to support community schools in the form of community school advisors was included. In July, we have created a job description, which will be on the agenda tonight, asking you to approve. In addition, we reviewed key documents, met as a district leadership team, and started identifying key documents and establishing monitoring and accountability measures for community schools. At the initial district leadership team meeting, you can turn to the next slide, please. This meeting comprised of site principals at Jefferson Middle School, Mission Elementary School, Laurel Elementary School, and Libby Elementary, along with district leadership, met to choose guiding documents to inform our work moving forward. There were several different documents that we reviewed, and we selected Building Community Schools: A Guide for Action that is put forth by the National Center for Community Schools. In the future, we will add teachers and classified staff to our community schools district leadership team to continue to refine our work. The next slide depicts the fact that we are thinking about community schools as a strategy and way of being. Community schools are not a destination to achieve at one time, but rather a way to reflect upon our work and a strategy for continuous improvement and engagement. As you can see on this graphic, each phase is consistently evolving and constantly moving forward as we learn more and identify new areas for service and growth. Next slide, please. The community schools work is grounded in the developmental triangle that puts children at the center of all we do. The families and community support, the student, and the organizational strategies include high-quality core instructional programs, expanded learning, bringing into the school rather than referring out health and well-being supports, and families are full partners in the process. Next slide, please. As we review the community schools coordinator position, which is on the board agenda, the key to this model is having a full-time dedicated community schools coordinator. This is work that often has fallen to the principal, who as the instructional leader, needs to focus on the instructional program. This person would be a classified leader. The job includes a full partnership on the leadership team, conducting local needs assessments, and identifying and coordinating community partnerships, and identifying services to bring within into the school. This person works in the direction of the school principal and district leadership. Next slide, please. The key to the process are capacities in community schools. These include comprehensiveness of program and services, collaboration among stakeholders, coherence as we move forward, and commitment to sustaining high-quality services, programs, and education for all students. As we evaluate the implementation of community schools, we will continue to monitor these capacities closely. Next slide. The core components of schools that are in service of student learning are health supports, both mental and physical, parent and guardian education and leadership opportunities, and expanded enrichment. Next slide. As we move forward, we think it's important to make sure that we establish particular benchmarks for implementation. We have set tasks and identified key evaluation markers at two months, five months, nine months, and beyond. As we implement the model, we will monitor and adjust our work to best respond to new learning, emerging best practices, and opportunities. Next slide, please. As we build the program, we will be using LCAP to fund the role of the community school coordinator at each site. To continue the work, we will be looking for grant opportunities from the California Department of Education and the United States Department of Education. Funds that are set aside for expanding programs ended in 2020, but there is a potential for California funding in the 2022 school year for expanding existing programs. And the United States Office of Education has an eligibility for a competitive grant in the fiscal year 2022, which we will be looking to implement. It was canceled for 2021. Thank you very much, and I hope that you are able to approve this position tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Levy, for the information. Do we have any questions for staff, fellow board members? Comments, concerns?
Public comment first.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't know if you had questions.
I said no.
Okay, no questions? All right. Anne, will you call up the public comments?
Patty K.
Okay. Unfortunately, I can't ask each of you questions. That's why I was here, for clarification, basically. Dr. Levy, you do, you know, really well on your charts and your research, and take a lot of time. I understand that. But I really, with your test scores the way they are, I do not see how you can authorize board spending 60,000 to 75,000 on an additional office that is a social outreach in the community. I just don't understand where, why this money is going out. As I, your slides did not show what I read in the description. It's a community partnership, again. Community. What is a community school, is what I would ask, if the board could respond, or do you know? It's a community liaison. What does that have to do with teaching our kids reading, writing, science? You're allowing this person to collaborate. You're going out into the community, community partners, community schools. What does that have to do with reading, math, science? You want to encourage parents to be involved. If parents are interested, aren't they going to get involved? You want to monitor the community schools and the outcome. More money. Create supportive relationships with community stakeholders to build knowledge, connections, services that are aligned with the community school. Represent the district community school initiative with events. Events like this, sponsored by Jordy Sparks, where it's an informational forum authorized by the school district, I cannot believe, where you tell parents, if they're illegal, how to avoid the law. I mean, it's just, that's your community events? Bring parents in so they can get the community freebies? What does that have to do with the kids sitting in the classroom? I wish you could respond, I really do. Do any of you on the school board really know what you're voting on? You're voting on a community social agenda, not on the classroom, not on the students, when you care so much about the students. I just cannot justify, justify the money spent on this position. Please vote no.
And do we have any more speakers on that item?
Not on this item.
Okay. So I'll turn it over to my board colleagues. Do you guys?
I would just say that I'm so incredibly proud of the board for taking this action and investing in our schools specifically, making sure that every student is taken care of as a whole child, because you cannot read if you have a hungry belly. We know that, we know that investments in our students is an investment well paid off. So I'm really proud of us for making this decision and moving forward on community schools.
I'll go. I'm fully supportive of this effort. We do a lot of partnerships already that's somewhat disjointed across the district with neighborhood service agencies in partnership with the city, with Vista Community Clinic, North County Health. We do a lot of things now that help our kids be successful in school. And this is one more step in doing that in a quadrant of the city that can use some help like that. So it's, I'm very supportive of it. I believe it will produce good students in our community. So I support it.
I think with those, the four schools mentioned are high-priority schools. I taught at one of those schools. They're high-priority schools. The students have significance needs that go beyond just academics. I think it's important that we have good management for these community schools and that we start out the get-go. Excuse me. If you're in the audience speaking, it's, we're having a board discussion. So this is your first warning, okay? All right. So high-priority schools, I, we have to make sure that we have proper management and we have the staff to support it. That way, it's done well. So I support it as well. I'm excited about it, and I think it's a great direction to go.
On that note, I'd like to make a motion to make this full and go full circle as we support these students and we go and give them the best that we possibly can, because that's what we're here for. We're here to support our students and to give them and have them be, help them be successful. That's the biggest thing. So I make a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of supporting item 7A, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item eight, curriculum and instruction. We do not have any public comment for this. This is a ratification for purchase of additional materials from Vista Higher Learning.
Yes, good evening, Board. This item is to purchase additional materials to support world languages in our high schools and our middle school. And due to increased enrollment in those courses, we need to purchase additional materials.
Have any questions for staff?
Nope.
All right. I'll make a motion. I have a first.
A second.
We have a second. Seeing more, no further discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 8A, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8B, approval of agreement with Callahan Consulting, Oceanside Unified School District, Secondary Mathematics Initiative, 2021, 2022.
Thank you, good evening. This again is an item that will support our math instruction at our secondary levels, an identified area of need to ensure that our students graduate college and career readiness, with college and career readiness. And this is a, funded by a grant, not general funds, the Comprehensive Support and Improvement Grant.
Just a real quick question. It does support our, all the sites, right? It's not just one particular school?
Yes, this grant is for all of our secondary sites.
That all?
Can't hear you very good. I don't know if it's on, is it?
Take this stupid thing off. So just wanted to make sure and clarify that, that better? Sorry. Just wanted to make sure and clarify that it's for the sites, not just one particular site, so that all students will have access to this. And that as we go through and we move forward with getting initiatives like this, that this would be something that all would have access to.
Yes, this is primarily around professional learning to increase the skills of our teachers and to focus on the mathematical instruction, so that more students will be able to achieve at higher levels for all sites.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Is there a report that comes from this, since they're analyzing our current status of math?
Yes, there will be some reporting out as well.
Data, like data.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Seeing no further discussion. We have a first and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 8B, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item 8C, approval of independent study program master agreement.
Yes, the legislature in AB 130 requires that we updated our independent study master agreements, and this is an item to align with that. And examples of what the independent study master contract will be in place, so that we may continue with that program.
Do we have any questions?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a first and a second. No further discussion?
No.
I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 8C, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item 8D, ratify approval of benchmark steps to advance grades two through five, English and Spanish.
Yes, this is for additional supplemental materials to address needs of our youngest learners around phonemic awareness and early reading. Approval will allow us to purchase these materials to support those students.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
A second.
All right, we have a first and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of supporting item 8D, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. No, I do not have it on my list of public comments.
We have it for 12G.
Sorry.
I don't have it. There's a public comment for 12G. I'm wondering if there was confusion between the two items.
12G?
They're both on independent study. We'll take it at 12G. We'll take it at 12G because we already voted. Sorry. I have a list right here of all the public comments, so I'm being very conscious of who's up next, so I don't go too fast. So, all right. Moving on to item 8E, Approval of Benchmark Phonics Intervention, Grades K Through 2, English and Spanish.
Yes, these are materials that are aligned with our core adoption to be acting as a Tier 2 intervention, Tier 3 intervention for kindergarten through second graders. These materials will be used by their teacher and intervention specialists to support
So these will be used by the intervention teachers we are using COVID funds on?
This is correct.
I would make a motion to approve.
A second.
All right. First and a second. No further discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 8E? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item 9A, Ratification of Panorama Education Student Success Agreement. We do have one public speaker for this. Go ahead. Can we have staff presentation?
Yes, thank you. This item is for Panorama Education, and I'll refer to Dr. Sparks, who will update us on this item.
Can you hear me now? Okay. So the Panorama Student Success Survey is our social emotional learning universal screener. It's administered three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, in grades 3 to 12, and also available in grades K through 2 in a written format. The survey takes between 10 to 15 minutes to complete. The SEL survey results populate on a dashboard that integrates additional student data from information systems such as ARES, assessment scores, discipline, and attendance data. So this could be kind of a student success dashboard that integrates from all of those places to be kind of a one-stop shop for educators to use to see social emotional results, discipline data, attendance data, anything that's available in our student information system. The results can be used for social emotional learning lessons, student guidance, intervention, and feedback to educators. In accordance with all partnerships and programs in OUSD, Panorama uses our data privacy agreement that details services. It determines what access they have and also prohibits any third-party sharing requests.
Do you have any questions? I've just seen if you have any questions first.
Three, three times a year?
It's administered three times a year, so fall, winter, and spring. We do have the option of a fourth administration of something we're able to do. This will be our second year using the Panorama tool.
All right. Anne, will you call up the public speaker?
Emily Wegman. I know when I was on the Board and we had a speaker coming for part of the agenda, that of course, you know, you wouldn't have to answer me, but I would be, as a Board member, I would ask the staff the question, same question. They would have to answer you. And so that's the way we worked it many, many years ago, and I think that's the way it should be brought back on this, on this agenda's item. I thought it was real interesting that the educational psychology is really coming forth. And in this certain company, the researchers, they're all about educational psychologists. They're all about working with school counseling, et cetera, et cetera. So it's real interesting to see that on the sideline you have, it's going to integrate the academics, it's going to integrate the SPAC. And it's really interesting to see when you get all this information, who's, I have a question, and I'll need to meet with Jordy to get those answers since I won't get them tonight. Who's going to be looking at this dashboard? Is the teacher going to be, again, our poor teachers with everything else they have to do, teach academics, heaven forbid, that they're going to have to go through each and every student and see what's going on, what's not going on, what is happening, what is that? You know, what was going on in the family? My mother had a bad day that day, so this time they didn't do well. So what are they going to do for the poor teacher? Another thing I would be asking is that, of course, we have our student and parent privacy, the 520, well, the 5020 and the 5022. Are these surveys, do the parents get to see each and every, every survey, each and every question so that they feel comfortable? Because we know that parents can say no to any survey that infringes on their physical or mental health of their child. And who knows how many of these kids, again, with the trauma that they faced this past year and a half, not being in school, being masked, you know, all the turmoil that's going on, that there isn't going to be some mental problems. And so, so how are you going to be equipped with that? Do you have enough counselors? Again, do you have personnel credentials? Our teachers aren't counselors. Our teachers aren't credentialed to do that. I mean, they're, they're there to teach, and I can, I know enough teachers, when they've been there 10 years, and they know their kids, they know the different learning styles. And so we're paying so much money for these guys to, to tell us what to do and how to do it, and our quality teachers already have that down, have had that down for, for many, many years. And I just hope that our teachers aren't going to be involved in so much of that. And the way of what they need to be doing is teaching their kids, as Raquel said, loving their kids, making their kids feel safe instead of going through their personal problems and their personal psyche and seeing what they can do with it. And it'll be interesting to see. I'll be waiting for the reports. So if I can have a time to sit down with Jordy and make an appointment with him to have these questions answered for me, I'd appreciate it.
All right. So I'm looking at my Board colleagues. Do you, questions, concerns?
Move approval.
I'll second.
I would ask, the data information was something that we had talked about before. Who does have access to results of a student's particular data? And I would assume that the, we just doubled the amount of counselors that we have in elementary schools as of this year, so that they would be ones that would have access to that, too?
That's, that's correct. So at the school site, a school administrator, the student's teacher, a counselor, and a school psychologist could all have access to the student's results. And also, parents are able to review the questions and see results on the dashboard as well.
And I would assume we still rely on our teachers because they, as we know, know their students so well to make those recommendations for counselors to see them. But this is another tool for them to use on a regular basis that they can check in with kids. It's a check-in.
It does provide a check-in opportunity for students as well. It's one of the features of the Panorama tool.
Thank you.
All right. We have a first and a second. Any more discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 9A? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item 11, Business. I'll turn it over to Dr. Vitale to talk about resolution number three.
Great. So I'm standing in for Dr. Norman, so I will present this item for her. The district requested a waiver of certain surplus property requirements from the State Board of Education for sale of its Pacific property. The State Board of Education granted the district's waiver on July 14, 2021, and released the explanation of its decision with certain conditions on July 21, 2021. At its July 20th Board meeting, the Board reviewed a number of proposals for the purchase of Pacifica and identified Meritage as the top offer, instructing staff to move forward with the negotiation of a letter of intent with Meritage. The Board determined after consideration of many factors that Meritage's offer was in the best interest of the district for the following reasons: the offer price, the developer reputation, the ability to sustain operations during economic fluctuations, and feasibility of the development proposal. So with that, staff recommends the Board approval of this resolution.
We do have one public comment for this item.
Larry Berry.
My name is Larry Berry, live on 3973 Brown Street, Oceanside. And it's good to be here, the first time in a long time, a public meeting. It's good to see our red shirt communist friends in the back here. Jennifer Skillet there, who is from Carlsbad, once told me she would never send her kids to Oceanside Schools. So that's why I say she's from Carlsbad all the time. This, this particular item is something that I have a problem with and that the financial money, the dollars, don't, you know, if we're going to give this up and the deal is done and how we're going to do with it, where does the money go? I mean, does it go back to the taxpayers? Does it go back in the general fund? Or does it go to the red shirts? I want to know what we're going to do with this money. And we've, I've seen, I've been Oceanside 38 years and four kids through K-12. I've just seen the stupidity of our Board members that have just wasted money time and time again. And I have no faith in you, Superintendent. You've messed up big time in a few things already. And I want to know what we're going to do with the money, how it's going to go. Does it go back to pay down our debt? We got bonds out here, school bonds that are out here, and we don't know where the money's coming from. You're spending money and you're giving it up. And, and the honest thing, I was having a conversation with some people is, especially in that neighborhood, and like in my neighborhood, I'm 70 years old and we still have people that are, you know, I'm the youngster in the neighborhood, and we got a lot of widows. These houses are going to turn over and kids are going to start to come into those, young families are going to start to move into those buildings. So I'd like to know what, what, what problem, what, I mean, I know the California Education Code says it's almost impossible to sell this property and then move it out. You got to go through hoops and stuff, and, and I don't know who you paid off to get this thing done, but what are we going to do to get, you know, if there is, you know, opportunity? Now, I know Bonfle has a great school there in that area, and we have Del Rio, and obviously we'll put, but at some point, our population is going to change. I truly believe it. Now, as my wife says, but they're not going to go to Oceanside Schools. So we got to figure out how we're going to, if we're going to need those schools and what we're going to do to take them. So I just, I'd like to see some actual facts, where the money's going, how it's going to be developed. Is it going to the general fund and we're going to give everybody raises and we're going to do pet projects all over the place? And I don't know, the woman that you had, I sat on the Oversight Committee Board, and that woman, I don't know who she is, she's new, she took Soto's spot, and she's just terrible. I'm just going to tell you that.
Mr. Berry. That concludes public comment for that item, 11A. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number three for 2122?
Yeah, I'll move approval. The findings were presented in the resolution number 032122, and it lays out the reasons that we're selecting Meritage, and it's nothing untoldry or under the table, Mr. Berry, so I will assure you of that. And it's, it has to go through city public hearing processes. It'll take one year, two years, three years for that to occur, but that will be on their, the city council's decision about whether anything ever gets developed and whether we ever get any money for this site. And we will spend the money in accordance with the state of California's rules for that towards the benefit of our district and our kids. So I move approval without reservation.
I'll second.
All right. I have a first and a second.
Are there restrictions on money that we take in from property sales?
The restrictions are that it's one-time money and we wouldn't want to use it for ongoing costs.
The only other thing that we didn't really speak about is, in our previous meetings, we made it very clear that whatever is put on this, whatever development is put on this property, it would remain open to the public. It would not be a gated community so that those community members could share in the open spaces created within that property as well. So I just wanted to make sure that was on public record.
All right. We have a first and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 11A? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to items 12 on policy development. We do have one speaker on item 12B and one on 12G, so just a heads up. These are policy developments. We have school board policy that needs to be updated, reviewed, written, et cetera. So these go kind of quickly because we've all had an opportunity to read them over. So I'll start with item 12A, Approval of Replacement of Board Policy 3553, Free and Reduced Price Meals.
Yes, I'll be presenting this item. The last time this item was updated, this board policy was in 2010. This policy is being updated to reflect new law SB 138, which requires districts to apply for a federal universal meal service for very high poverty schools as defined for the purpose of providing breakfast and/or lunch free of charge to all students enrolled at the school. OUSD schools that currently qualify for this provision are Mission and Jefferson. In addition, the section related to confidentiality and allowable purposes for sharing students' free and reduced price meal eligibility information was revised to reflect the elimination of Title I program improvement. Although this board policy is being updated, OUSD is already in compliance with the new laws, and we recommend approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any, any more discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 12A? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to 12B, Approval of Replacement of Board Policy 7214, General Obligation Bonds. We have one speaker.
Yeah. I'll present first. Yes. The last time this policy was updated was May of 2011, and this policy is being updated now to reflect new laws. SB 1029, which required the Board to adopt a debt management policy prior to issuing any debt, including a general obligation bond, and is certified to the California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission that the proposed issuance of debt is consistent with the district's policy. The update also reflects new law AB 2116, which requires the Board to obtain reasonable and informed projections of assessed valuations that take into consideration projections of assessed property valuations made by the county assessor. Lastly, the update also reflects new law AB 2738, which prohibits districts from withdrawing proceeds from bond sales at any time for the purpose of making investments outside the county treasury. Although the board policy is being updated, OUSD is already in compliance with the new laws, and we recommend approval of this item.
Public comment?
Larry Berry.
This is the general obligation bond and stuff, and I just want to make it clear that I sit on the Board, I sit on many Boards, but on the San Diego County Taxpayer Association, on that Board, and we rejected that, the Prop W that went through. And, and you got to, you're coming up, I'll give you a heads up, you're having a, we give a grade to all our school districts in the county and the community colleges, anyone that had a bond that's been issued to them. And I'm just going to give you a heads up, you guys are getting a failing grade with Dr. Soto and Colette and Hataher and being, you're the worst, failing grade throughout with bond and how you, how you get the message out to the public and how you're being read out to the public. So I just want to let you know that, and, and you know this as well, is the San Diego County Taxpayer Association did not support you in Prop W that went through. They, they rejected it and they did not affirm or give you a passing grade when you proposed that, but it passed and, you know, everything's for the children, so nobody cares how much it costs, though, but I have, you know, someone, I own three houses in Oceanside, and, you know, I got to pass those costs on to the renters. And this is a real difficult time for people that own property that are renters with this eviction notice. But, you know, this bond and general bond and getting it in, there should be more public talk to and, and get this out in the open and hiding. I know as a person that sat on the Oversight Committee for Prop G and H, I, I just, you know, the crap that went on with Mike Blessing here is just appalling. And the lies and the mistrust is just something that just went on and on. And we get the information and say, oh yeah, there we go, we passed it, and we, you know, we got to live with it. I can tell you, you know, enough of this stuff, I still, burns me, the lies that went on with Mike with Camp Pendleton, and we built two schools on Camp Pendleton, and we, they never paid one penny for it. And, and so, and all these other schools that we're doing with. And so I just want to let you know that there's, you got to be more transparent and more open, and I don't know who that, you have another person here that's taken over for Soto, and she doesn't have a clue what she's doing. And I've had several phone calls and emails to her and Colette, and they don't respond. So they're hiding something. Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have any questions for staff, fellow Board members?
No questions, staff. Just a point of personal privilege, Larry, I appreciate your comments, and, you know, we go back along. we go back a long ways and a lot of things back and forth, but I do reject that I've ever lied to anybody on this board about how we proceeded with our bonds and our capital facilities in this, in this community. So I just want to say that in the record. I'll move approval of the policy.
I'll second. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 12B, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to 12C, approval of replacement of board policy 4117.3, personnel reduction.
Thank you, President. Begin, this is a replacement of a 2010 existing policy that is updated with new language provided by CSBA Policy Management Council. For board approval.
Move approval.
I'll second. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of item 12C, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item 12D, approval of replacement of board policy 4200, classified personnel.
Similar as the previous item, this again is just replacing existing board policy with new language for board approval.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Seeing no questions or discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of item 12, sorry, D, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item 12E, board policy, revision of board policy 5030, student wellness.
This policy update reflects our best practices and knowledges about social, emotional learning, physical education, and our health education. It includes nutritional education and school meals and reflects current law. I also want to note that upon review from the San Diego Department of Edu, sorry, San Diego County Office of Education, we received an outstanding mark on this policy.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second. Calling for the vote. All in favor of approving item 12E, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item 12F, deletion of board policy 6157, distance learning.
Yes, this is a deletion of a policy that expired as of this year in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Move approval.
I'll second.
First and a second. No questions, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of item 12F, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item 12G, update to board policy 6158, independent study.
Yes, this is an update to our board policy to reflect current law AB 130, independent study.
All right, we have one public comment on this item.
Katie Taylor.
Okay, thank you. I've reviewed the policy and I just want to know if this isn't going to include self-brainwashing if somebody wants to do independent study. I think this board is already very clear on my opposition to your ethnic studies course. And we have to remember, these kids in K-11 and K-12, this is mandatory, they can't refuse to take these ethnic studies that you're forcing upon them. I emailed to you earlier today, and to the Superintendent, the California Education Code 51530, Article 4, regarding the advocacy and teaching of communism. I'll read the first, you have the whole thing, but I'll read you the first paragraph. "No teacher giving instruction in any school or on any property belonging to any agencies, including the public school system, shall advocate or teach communism with the intent to indoctrinate or to inculcate in the mind of any pupil a preference for communism." Now I want you to refer to your own ethnic studies. I'm sure you didn't bring it with you, but it's page 14, it's number 13. "Prison industrial complex. I want to specifically address the use of materials by Angela Davis. Students must read her book, Prisons Are Obsolete," and references to Asada Shakur, which requires, requires reading excerpts from her book. Both are communist. Angela Davis ran for Vice President twice on the Communist Party ticket. Ashada Shakur, or her FBI Most Wanted name, Joanne Deborah Chesimard, I brought her FBI poster with you if you'd like to see what it looks like, is a convicted cop killer who escaped from prison, living in exile in communist Cuba. I see no information on your ethnic studies guides where these students will learn about this background information or informing students these women are communist and want a cop killer. And any opinion they spread in their ethnic studies guidelines is from a communist and a killer perspective. Clearly, the outline is prepared to present a very sympathetic communist viewpoint. Plus, students will go into groups to make informational poster which highlights the key points in Angela Davis's book, further pounding in the communist point of view. The posters will be hung on the campus and distributed within the school, guests not to the parents. And clearly, the goal is to glorify the communist viewpoint of Angela Davis and communist cop killer Asada Shakur. Since the board approved these materials under the guidance of Superintendent Vitale, I can only presume all approve violating the California Education Code against promoting communism. I can only presume the board approves the teaching and viewpoint of communism. So because they approved the ethnic studies course and the indoctrination that goes with it. Another part of why parents all across California, all across this country, are demanding critical race theory, diversity, equity, inclusion must be stopped.
Thank you. And... I will make another reminder that your public comment...
As a point of clarification, ethnic studies is an elective for 11th and 12th grade students. It does not promote nor endorse communism as a worldview.
So this item was independent study, so this would have been a non-agenda item for future reference. So I'm going to call, I have a first.
Yep.
And a first and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item 12G, say aye.
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 I'm sorry, I called point of order.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Is this a first read of this policy or is this...
It's just an update to the board policy, but it doesn't specifically spell out any of the other...
It doesn't need a first read and then a vote later?
No.
No, not for an update. That's for a new board policy, I believe. All right. So, I'm looking at my colleagues. Do you guys need a five-minute break or no? Are you good? All right. How many public comments do we have?
We have nine.
Nine public comments. So item 14 is our favorite time of the night. So these are public comments on non-agenda items. We are happy to make sure you have a meaningful opportunity to share information with the board. Each person may speak up to three minutes. I would urge the audience not to cheer or clap during their talking because we want to hear what they have to say. So will you call up two speakers at a time or three so they know who's coming?
Okay, our first two, Ron Sanders and then Emily Witchman.
My name is Ron Sanders. I live in South Oceanside. I'm here tonight to talk about CRT, Critical Race Theory. This toxic ideology has spread throughout every sphere of American life. Critical Race Theory creates categories of the oppressors and the oppressed and underlines identity politics. CRT seeks to solve concerns about racial inequality, but instead of solving problems, it creates new ones. It promotes a belief that America is a fundamentally racist country and that our institutions are designed to maintain white supremacy. CRT sees every human relationship in terms of a race-based power struggle. It sees institutions like law, education, and business as the main source of racial problems. Critical Race Theory holds that most important thing about you is your race, the color of your skin, that's who you are. Not your behavior, not your values, not your environment, but your race. CRT begins from the assumption that racism occurs in all inner reactions. To see how this works, consider this thought experiment. You own a shop and two people walk in at the same time, one white and one black. Who do you help first? If you help the black person first, CRT would say you did so because you don't trust black people to be left alone in your store. That's racist. If you help the white person first, instead, CRT would say you did so because you think blacks are second-class citizens. That's racist too. It can find racism in anything, even if it has to read your mind to do it. CRT proponents claim racism is present everywhere and always, and they look for it critically until they find it. CRT rejects individual freedom and responsibility. It divides people into racial groups, pits the groups against each other, and judges guilt or innocence based on race. This threatens the best ideals of the American founding. I have a question, but I understand you're not answering questions. I didn't realize that. So I'm going to hold off on it, but I am interested in knowing.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Dr. Vitale and school board members. I was not here for the equity and cultural proficiency in the OUSD presentation on June 22nd. I'd like to be with a staff member as I have a couple of questions. I also have a meeting with Dr. Lawrence about the ethnic studies outline tomorrow. I will report to the school board next month what I learned about OUSD's ethnic studies. I made an observation on the first page of the ethnic and cultural proficiency presentation. It's about the two quotes. The second quote on the page by Dr. Anthony King, "I understand and I agree," it states, "everyone gets what they need to be successful, which includes access, opportunity, and resources. This is a mindset and not just actions." The first quote by Dr. Annette Jackson states, "Equity is almost like love. It has a different definition based off of people's experiences with it. Equity is an intentional ability to give up privilege and power for a greater good." In my experiences, intentional ability to give up privilege and power for a greater good means communism. I have privilege. I am privileged to be a citizen of this great country. I am privileged to have the First Amendment rights, which guarantees freedoms concerning religion, expression, assembly, and right to petition. I am privileged to live in Oceanside where my children grew up with other children who were also multiracial and cultural. I am privileged to have parents who struggled and sacrificed to learn a new language and culture and attain the American dream. I have power. I have power to control my own destiny. I have power to use our freedoms for the betterment of my family and my community. I have power to lead and guide my family with our morals and values, and I have power to know where I came from, who I am, and where I am going. I will never give up my privilege and power for the greater good. I pay my taxes, I vote, I am a law-abiding citizen, I give my time, talents, and money to organizations I see in need to support. I live by the golden rule and I know where much is given, much is required. I am a proud American who will continue the legacy of my family who came to this country for the freedoms, for the many freedoms, and I will never give up that privilege or power. Thank you.
Our next three speakers will be Bradley Tobias, Julie Sturck, and Katie Taylor. Bradley Tobias.
Hey, good evening, everybody. First off, I want to say, you know, to the board, thank you for serving. I understand that, you know, this is a role of public service and, you know, it takes a sacrifice for you. In that, I would also like to state that we are, we are partners in the education of our children. You know, the slide that was up here before stated that the children are at the center of that triangle and that, you know, everything is based around the children. In that, you know, in both you being part of the board, you are responsible to us, the people. You, you took an oath to, to work for us. Part of that oath is supporting and defending, we're not defending, but supporting the Constitution of the United States. Nowhere in this Constitution, and I've read this a dozen times, does it say anything about, about race, about, you know, about gender, you know, about any inequalities. It simply says, "We, the people. We, the people of this great nation," and that's all. It's, you know, we're all equal in every, in every right aspect or, you know, whatever subcategory there is. Which brings me to my point. CRT is unconstitutional. CRT, you know, ethnic diversity studies, whatever you call it, however, however you paint it, it's not, it's not right. First off, it's a theory, therefore, by definition, it's unprovable. You know, it's, what I expect from teachers to teach my kids is two plus two will always equal four, not five. That a noun will always be a person, place, or thing. And that's it. I want my, I want my students, I want the teachers, supported by the school board, to teach my kids facts, cold hard facts, and that's it. CRT also teaches, you know, that kids are oppressed. Essentially, it's teaching that bullying is okay. And there's enough bullying going on, whether it's, you know, maskers versus non-maskers, whether it's, you know, whatever, whatever. You know, it's divisive. Divisive at its core. It's also a Trojan horse for many things that could happen. Today, the Governor of Oregon wrote into law that the, that common, common, common core classes like math, science, you know, things like that, don't need to happen, don't need to be taught. Is that, is that what's coming next? Is that what's going to be happening here in California, here in Oceanside next? I don't think so. Lastly, I just want to say that there are better things to, to put our time, energy, and resources to, like trafficking. We are the second highest nation, second highest county in the nation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Okay, first of all, I want to say, you'll have to excuse me, I haven't eaten, so I'm a little nervous. But I want to say, I just want to have this time to speak without any interruptions or any animal sounds. Good evening. I'm here to voice my opposition to Critical Race Theory. I'm here to remind you that the school has no business teaching moral values to our children. I'm here to tell you that parents are fed up with the education system thinking they have moral authority to teach right and wrong. They don't. Educators focus on academics and leaving the parenting to the parents. The kids have already lost a year in class study. Adding your interpretation of social justice does nothing to help them in a world where reading, writing, and arithmetic are needed to get a job, join the military, succeed in college, or compete in the world market. My name is Julie Sturck and you'll see me here again next board meeting. Mr. Mike Blessing, I will see to it that you will be fired.
Just to follow up and let everybody know, I sent to Superintendent Vitale and the board members today to support all my comments. I sent everyone, you have it in your email, the California code I referred to that prohibits the indoctrination of communism. I'd also sent you an article regarding a new bill that's being proposed in Congress called the Hartzler Fights to Prevent Military Children Being Taught to Hate Their Country and Their Parents Through Critical Race Theory. We live in a military town and I think all of you need to read this, see what they're proposing, and think what you're doing with ethnic... proposing, and think what you're doing with ethnic studies. I also sent you a fabulous, fabulous presentation by Walter Myers III that I was fortunate enough to hear, that is probably one of the most intelligent, thoughtful presentations on Critical Race Theory that I've ever had the privilege to listen to. I hope you take the time to read it. Oh, and by the way, he's black. And I also sent you the Most Wanted poster of the person you're going to be promoting for our kids that's still on the FBI Most Wanted list. So, don't tell me you're not promoting communism. Thank you.
Next three speakers, Patty Kaye, Graham Fraser, and Michelle Harrington.
This is for the parents in the room, and I will let all the other parents of the school district know, by the example of the school board tonight, on this meeting tonight, August 10th, that the children in the classroom can remove their masks when they are speaking as, by example of the school board tonight. Every single school board member did. Thank you. I wanted to know if there was any follow-up on the logo design, that we wanted to save the school 10,000-plus dollars by letting the student graphic department design? Any comment on that? Okay. I wanted to say that the SEL, the Social Emotional Learning, that you're so concerned about and so emphasizing so much, well, how do masking your children for five, six, seven hours a day fit into that SEL? Just asking. Okay. Do you really think that China, who is dominating, has an SEL program, people? Really? Korea? Russia? I really don't think so. They are achieving, people. And I understand on the, on the panel here, not just the board, but the other members, I can see the age group, and I understand you going to liberal universities and institutions. I get where you're coming from, but look at us, who have years more experience, and I might say wisdom. Learn from us. Don't just be indoctrinated by your liberal education classes, seriously. I've been in education classes. It's touchy-feely and playing games. Tell me, how many of your teachers, maybe I asked this before, are certified therapists? Because, stop holding therapy sessions, they're not qualified. And a real quick story, I took my youngest grandson up to visit a friend of 40 years this weekend, and she has grandchildren and step-grandchildren, and we all played. And we went to Baskin Robbins, that's what you do in a small town. We went to the sand dunes, and they jumped and played, and we went to dinner. Not until we were sitting at dinner with the three of them, and my friend, who I, a former teacher, who is talking about CRT, did I look at the three children from 11 to 13. It never occurred to me when they were playing, one is from a black Italian parentage, one is from a black Hispanic family, and one is from European family. Never was the thought in my mind of skin color when those kids were playing. And this is what your CRT is doing. It's putting ideas in their head.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Members of the board, my name is Graham Fraser, a 40-year resident of Oceanside, former district engineer for 10 years, so district saw fit to hire me. I'm an American of choice, and I took an oath to honor and uphold the U.S. Constitution when I, and I took it religiously to heart. When I saw you pledge your allegiance to the flag, to the Constitution earlier this evening, I was struck by your hypocrisy, since you approved the Methodist Communist teachings under the false flag named Ethnic Studies Curriculum, which promotes the very opposite principles of the pledge. The curriculum is straight out of the Critical Race Movement, it's a movement playbook, whose aim is tearing down every part of the society, including marriage, religion, everything. It's a scorched earth policy towards rebuilding to a yet-determined, undetermined utopia. Why is the district lying, Michael? And Mercedes? Behind this despicable propaganda from, from the public? Is it because you don't want the public to think the district's leaders are socialist communists? Or because of the California Education Code prohibits the teaching of communism, if you heard other speakers? Shame on you. Each of you will be held accountable for your traitorous decision to approve this anarchist-promoting curriculum with the insidious goal of indoctrinating students to graduate to Antifa, not to college. The people will throw you out of office when they become aware that the only racist, only racist would approve a racist curriculum in the name of anti-racism. How dare you allow this to happen with these young minds and to society? Having said all that, I expect by now you have judged me to be a white supremacist or worse. America is not a racist country, but there are Americans who are racist. I'm not one of them, and I can prove it, just like I proved that you are the racist. I have a similar family history to that of black slaves brought to America against their will. Like so many of their descendants, I'm also eligible to enter the victim Olympics, but declined to do so. In similar circumstances, my father, forefathers were forcibly taken from their family, from his family in England to Australia, in chains, to serve brutal masters for seven years for the crime of stealing seven shovels. Despite this deprivation after several generations, I survived and thrived, just like many black Americans have done. For the love of freedom and opportunity, my wife, Anne, and I legally immigrated to the U.S. via sponsorship of a great American company. Now, 50 years later, our two boys, now grown men, both married...
Thank you. Your three minutes is up.
Oh dear, okay. Can I have one more minute, please?
Next speaker? No, I'm sorry, it's three minutes, we are equitable, so...
Well, I'm going to tell you, I'm mad as hell...
Next speaker.
I'm mad as hell and not buying these devilish lies...
Next speaker.
Neither will the general public when they find you out.
Michelle, Harry, Mr. Francis.
Can you bring, can you bring somebody here to throw me out, please?
No. We don't need to throw you out because you're going to follow the rules. We, we don't do that.
You can't do that.
You cannot do that. All right, who is our next speaker? Okay, great. You have three minutes.
You know, Stacy, you said something last time to me. You said, "Why don't you come outside and I'll educate you?" Thought about that, it just didn't sit well with me. You did say that while you were sitting there. We were talking about a topic, and it just didn't sit well with me, so I thought I'd come back, and I think I'll keep coming back. Because I find this board uninspiring, robotic, and very arrogant. And I wonder where the heck are all the parents that go to the school? We're, we're the older generation, where are they? Because I'm getting very concerned. And I want to tell you, last night, I heard Larry Elder. He is a product of this great country that we live in, he's running for governor, he's going to knock this Newsom out of the park. He is a black American, and guess what? He never uses the word "black" or "African-American." He says, "I am an American." Now, we've had it with all of this stuff. I have my little list here about what's going on in this country with school boards. One in Oklahoma saying that little kids that don't wear masks are committing murder. Look her up. She's in Norman, Oklahoma, sitting on these boards, that it's our responsibility that we let this happen. Because I remember in the 90s, as, as the superintendents make six figures a year, I had to break up my workday and go pick up my kid, not only my kid, but four other kids, because we were working while you idiots are making way too much money that we just let pass through, because we all think you're all Americans. You're a different breed. You're going to get, we're going to make sure that you don't get into office again. But I had to go pick up my kids, break up my day, while these idiotic superintendents make six figures. I want that changed too. Making way too much money, your pensions are breaking this state of California, the pensions are running us, they run us bankrupt. I'm furious right now, I'm just furious with what I heard. I learned more from this group and all of you people here. I haven't heard one thing from any of you that is factual and makes any sense. You guys are tools for the CDC. I'm shocked. At men at your age, you have a whole opportunity to change your view on America and how you teach these kids. Because I'm still working, my property taxes pay for my ability to come here, and having to listen to you is getting more infuriating and more infuriating as you sit there so arrogantly. And, you know, it's sad because God says we're all brothers and sisters. And if it wasn't for Him, I, we wouldn't call each other brothers and sisters. We'd just be this glob that grew from something. Why would we have anything in common? We're headed toward communism if you don't watch it, and if you don't grow up and actually listen to what we have to say, we're going to make sure that your, any political careers that you have in mind are gone. And I'm, you know, I never shake, but it's because I'm very emotional right now from what I heard and learned tonight. And Katie is absolutely correct on communism. And I, again, I'm raised, I'm raised Marine Corps, you guys are scaring the hell out of me. And my daughter's in her 30s, and she's a nervous wreck. So, just consider what you're doing.
Thank you. Anne, do we have one more speaker? That was our final speaker. All right, so, I am moving for item, this is off. Do we have any board discussion comments?
I would just, again, make sure that it's very clear to any viewing public that Oceanside has an ethnic studies course, they do not have a Critical Race Theory course. That ethnic studies has been known to build empathy between students, and it does create connection, not hate.
All right, thank you. Excuse me, we are running a board meeting. I already warned you about yelling out. All right, the meeting is adjourned.